Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome to the February 26, 2014, Lorraine County Board of Commissioners' meeting. Commissioner Kokoski has our dog today.
Actually, we have a repeat of last week. I'm not sure what happened, but this same little girl was here last week, obviously really needs a home, doesn't want to stay at the kennel any longer, she's very scared. She just wants a home to go home to and just come down to the kennel and pick her up. She's available right now. She'll be spayed or neutered prior to picking her up and mostly all of her shots practically fully vetted, so it's a great opportunity to get a job for her and it's not very expensive. So, come down to the kennel if you want to, you can check us out on the website, we also have a Facebook page that you can look at.
Madam Clerk?
Today, we have thirteen JVS DECA students that will receive certificates on achieving state competition and I believe Sarah Parker, their teacher, is here with them.
Well, let me just read what we have here. "The Lorraine County Joint Vocational School Marketing Manager DECA Program participated in District 9 DECA Winter Competitions at the NEA Conference Center at Kalahari on February 7, 2014. DECA prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs for careers in marketing, finance, hospitality and management in high schools and colleges around the globe. DECA's competitive event program directly supports our mission. As an integral part of the classroom curriculum, DECA's industry-validated competitive events are aligned with the national curriculum standards in the career clusters of marketing, business, management and administration, finance and hospitality and tourism. DECA's flagship evaluation process involves students in both a written component such as an exam or report and on interactive component with an industry professional serving as a judge. DECA's competitive events directly contribute to every student being college and career-ready when they graduate from high school. Over 175 DECA members from Strongsville, Maple Heights, Bedford and Lorraine County JVS competed heavily for the chance to advance to the state of Ohio DECA competitions in Columbus on March 14 and 15. The following students who will compete in the state DECA competitions are: Sophomore Olivia Taylor, first place in Principles and Business Administration; Junior Samantha Graham, first place in Principles of Finance; Junior Josh Schaeferstein, second place in Principles of Hospitality; Junior Don Syriak, second place in Principles of Marketing; Junior Kevin Talariano, second place in Accounting; Junior Anthony Biagi, second place in Business Finance; Senior Jacob Holliday, first place in Marketing Management; Senior Luke Ozanich, first place in Accounting; Seniors Jacob Beck and Tavaris Robinson, second place in Sports and Entertainment, Marketing Team Decision-Making; Marissa Koenig and Erica Murphy, second place in Team Fashion Merchandising Promotion Plan; Sabrina Kunkler, third place in Automotive Service Marketing. Of the twenty-six JVS DECA members who attended the competition, fifty percent will be advancing to the state competitions. Congratulations to all of you. If you want to come up, the teacher want to come up and receive these and if you'd like to say anything about the students, you're more than welcome to use our podium.
We have Ms. Parker coming up and she does a great job at JVS with the students. And I just want to say congratulations for everything that you guys do at JVS, wonderful program and you guys are taking advantage of it and making a difference, so, job well done.
This is my, actually, my first year at Lorraine County JVS, teaching the Marketing Management Program. I have been teaching the Satellite Marketing Program at North Ridgeville High School for the past five years. When I came out here, these kids, they really, really were unbelievable. They were interested, they're great workers, they ask a lot of questions, they take a lot of time to research all their subject areas. We also run the Corner Shop, which is the school store within Lorraine County JVS, so they get to learn a lot about retail, customer service, human relations, but they all did a great job and I'm looking forward to them competing very well at the state level. If they advance from the state level in March, then they get to go to Nationals and that's in Atlanta, Georgia this year, so, they did very, very well. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Wonderful job, guys.
Yeah, do you guys all want to stand up and they can scan around the room and take a look and see who you all are?
Would any of you like to come up and talk about your project or what you learned? No? Alright.
Shy and quiet teenagers.
No future politicians there.
Where do you guys like to come up?
There you go.
This year, as a senior, I decided to do the automotive part for DECA. I've always been very into automotive, I've always worked with my dad on, you know, vehicles that we've owned, vehicles for our company, and I decided to take a chance and do something that I'm passionate about and I decided to go for automotive. Went there, competed, and I got third place and now I'm going to states for something that I'm extremely passionate about as well as my future career field.
That's awesome.
Sabrina, tell us your name and where you're from.
I'm Sabrina Kunkler, I'm from Keystone High School and I go to JVS.
Nice, very good.
Good job. Okay, she broke the ice, anybody else want to give it a try?
Just so you all know, I did attend JVS back in the day, went for Administrative Secretary and absolutely loved the school and the program and got a job right out of high school and never not worked my whole life, thanks to JVS, it's a great school.
When Commissioner Kokoski went there, it was a one-room schoolhouse.
No, it wasn't, don't listen to him.
Yes, yes, and they had a whip as the motivation to get the transportation there.
My niece, actually, she's a senior there, she's going through the early educational program, she was able to get a scholarship to Ashland University, she's going to be going there to become a teacher, so, great program.
They have a lot of good opportunities, there are more than, even when I went, you know, back then, it was a long time ago, but they have so many more opportunities, because you're very fortunate to have a school such as JVS to call your alma mater.
If you guys are going to stick around, we're going to have a presentation from Alcohol, Drug Abuse Services.
Yeah, you might want to stick around for that.
Take care of your government credit this week. Ms. Jargus?
Dr. State, my name is...
Yes, please.
Hello. Elaine Jargus with the Alcohol Drug Addiction Services Board of Lorraine County. Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
For twenty-five years, the Alcohol Drug Addiction Services Board of Lorraine County has provided services through contracts for substance abuse, addiction, treatment and prevention funded through state and federal funds and grants. These past three years have been like no other in our community. Addiction is a chronic disease to which there's no cure, but it's treatable and people can recover. The recent opiate epidemic holds no gender, race, economic status or community apart from no others. Approximately five people die each day in Ohio due to a drug overdose. Drug overdoses are associated with high direct and indirect costs. Unintentional fatal drug poisonings cost Ohioans $1.9 billion on average each year in medical and work loss costs, while non-fatal hospital-admitted drug poisonings cost an additional $40 million. The total cost equals an average of $5.4 million each day in medical and work loss costs in Ohio. Last year, Dr. Stephen Evans, our Lorraine County Coroner, reported at least sixty-seven confirmed overdose deaths in Lorraine County. This was up just two years ago from twenty-two. But we cannot underestimate the power of prevention and knowledge to combat this epidemic in our communities. A key focus in Ohio is the Start Talking Campaign. Today, I'll provide a brief DVD called Parents 360 RX that was created by the Partnership at DrugFree.org. This provides information for parents and concerned citizens about the real dangers of medicine abuse and the actions that could be taken to prevent and respond to it. We have this available for any community group that would like to hear from us along with a Prescription Drug Abuse Toolkit with a variety of information. I'm also pleased to announce that our next community forum on this issue is scheduled for Wednesday evening, March 12, at the Oberlin Public Library. I'd like to thank you for allowing me time on your agenda today and we'll play the DVD.
Chelsea was very well-liked by our friends and by our teachers.
Ronnie was going down to Tennessee State to be the next player to come out of Tennessee State.
Joey was extremely popular, just surrounded by friends.
Mark was an athletic, fit-looking kid.
Erin enjoyed talking and debating with any and all people.
The prescription pain pill problem is a huge epidemic.
This is an epidemic.
This is an epidemic that has infiltrated our young people.
We never had a conversation with Joey about prescription drugs because we truly had no idea that there was any kind of recreational use going on.
The first time I started doing painkillers was when I was seventeen.
I would steal pills from my friend's mom. Her stepmom had script for Vicodin, that was like heaven. I went in her room and stole Vicodin every day.
He would ask to use the bathroom in other people's homes and he'd go in there and go in their medicine cabinets and steal prescription drugs.
These medications are available everywhere in every socioeconomic environment.
Ronnie was the starting hat back, one of our best players, he had several scholarship offers.
Ronnie was very popular in the neighborhood.
Ronnie was a neat freak, clean freak, always had his hair braided. When he got into the pill use, his mood changed, he changed, like, was that Dr. Jekyll, Mr. Hyde?
Ronnie's appearance really deteriorated and it was really unlike him.
I said, "Are you doing drugs?" And my son looked at me with these eyes of, "How could you even think of that, Mom?"
I was walking up to football practice, my coach was walking towards me, he just had this crazy look on his face, he goes, "You think they might have found your brother?" And I was like, to me, I was like goof and I was like, "I didn't know he went missing." So, I was like trying to make her like goofing off and he was like, "No, Justin, seriously, he might have found his body." And I was like, "Wait a minute," I was like, "Whoa, what?" He was like, "Yeah, they found, they discovered a body in an apartment in Telford."
I never thought my son would take prescription drugs without a prescription.
Parents often trip themselves up by asking a simple question, "Are you using drugs?" "No." One has to be able to say, "I'm seeing some signs here that concern me."
He was a little bit more argumentative, we thought that was maybe hormones.
The person has what we call pinpoint pupils, literally, the pupils look like a pinpoint.
She slept odd hours.
We didn't know why he was sleeping so late.
If I wasn't able to get high, then I didn't want to get out of bed because, you know, the physical withdrawals.
We were missing tinfoil from the kitchen, missing spoons.
We'd find the pens that were cut in half.
Straws.
There were a lot of charges coming on the credit cards.
We thought that there was somebody stealing money out of our account.
That's probably a pretty good clue, there's something going on.
Joey was pretty upset with his roommates, they were spending all their money on medication. Had I known that the medications that they were taking were so dangerous, I would have told them, "You're not even going back to that place."
If you feel something's going on, you got to investigate.
I thought it was just a phase, we, partly when we were in high school and it's just sort of a phase you go through as you go, you know, experience life and you grow out of it. I thought he was on that track.
Joey had been found and he was unconscious. He had all these medications that he had just received from this doctor, more than likely, he questioned, snorted it. We're just being completely hit blindly by, you know, a situation we had absolutely no understanding of and no notice of and in the meantime, my husband's in the house, I'm out front in the front of the house just, you know, wondering what we're dealing with here and so, finally, Joe just came out and said, "He's gone."
I was downstairs getting ready for work, Cookie told me she couldn't get Mark up. Mark was powerful and had the nickname in some circles of Tank. I reminded her that what she had to do was get a cup of water and splash him with it and stay out of his way. And she told me it was different. We found a clear plastic bag of loose pills. I'm not sure if he even thought he was doing drugs and I know that sounds crazy, but it's not like it was heroin or cocaine. We followed the ambulance to the hospital. A few minutes later, someone came in and told us that Mark was dead. We never thought that was a possibility. I had no idea that kids were abusing medicine.
I came home one night, saw the basement light on and went up to the window and my son was crushing and snorting pills.
We would find pills in the shoes, in the jackets that are hanging in the closet in the pockets.
I found some pills hidden under his cushion.
They were in his socks. I never checked my kid's socks.
He took the light switch plate off and put them in there.
Look everywhere, is it an evasion? No, you're doing the right thing as a parent.
I would question Chelsea and she would always assure me that everything is fine and nothing's wrong.
Kids don't want to get in trouble, so they're going to tell you exactly what you want to hear.
There was always something down deep inside that said to me, "Something's wrong." You doubt yourself because you wonder if you're making a bigger deal out of something.
You know, maybe deep down, my parents knew that I was high.
You can't always believe your child, their lies get bigger when they're trying to hide substance abuse.
I knew her inside and out and I remember Chelsea as the little girl that she used to be.
I looked at him and I only saw the most beautiful son in the world.
It was very difficult to think that she would be lying to me, which she was. She was out using and abusing prescription drugs.
Long-acting agents like oxycontin are meant to be delivered in the body over a period of hours, if not a day. If they're chewed, crushed and snorted, you get the entire dose at one blast and if the body's not ready to accommodate that, you will stop breathing.
We needed to call the police, but what are their neighbors going to think?
Put all of that aside and focus on what's important, as difficult as it may be.
Families can't get too caught up in the idea that, oh, there may be an arrest, charge on my son or daughter, they could be in jail, they could be in the morgue.
The law saved my life. If my mom hadn't called the cops on me, I don't know where I would be right now.
It was the most difficult thing to do, to call the police on your own child, it was horrible. I have gone from putting importance on things like, "What college are you going to get into", to just celebrating the fact that she's alive today. She's doing very well, she's clean and sober, she's productive, she's sweet, and I have her back and I'm thankful and it's wonderful.
Erin had spent the night at a friend's and they found him blue and non-responsive. They took him to a local hospital.
He was using Vicodin, which we found out through his toxicology, what was in his blood system.
I witnessed him have two heart attacks in ICU, he had staph, he had pneumonia, he went through seizures. The doctor was explaining to us that he was going to die. We held his hands on each side and we started crying and he just laid there.
People use the medications in an abusive way, not knowing what the full consequences are and somebody ends up here.
Within twenty-four hours, Erin had opened his eyes.
Parents are the first line of defense in terms of prescription drug abuse.
You got to sit your kids down, you just got to tell them about the severity of the problem.
There's a number of steps that you can take.
Educate your child and yourself very early.
Anybody who feels that this can't happen to my child.
It could happen to your kid.
Make sure that you don't have excess pills in your home.
Keep your medication locked up because you're never going to notice if something's gone.
What my mom does is she has these take-home pee tests that I got to take. You know, I want to keep my mom proud of me and I don't want to let her down.
You need to have the conversation with them about drug and substance abuse and you need to include prescription drugs and guide them so they're able to get through their high school years and into college and through their college years drug-free.
Have this conversation before it's too late to have this conversation.
Take a pause. Nationally, one in six teens has used a prescription drug in order to get high or change their mood. Two-thirds of teens who abuse pain relievers say they get them from family members and friends. And now, more Americans die from drug overdoses than car crashes. One person dies every nineteen minutes from drug overdose in the United States and this increasing trend is driven by prescription drug painkillers. Now that we know the facts, there are four easy steps to take action to protect your homes and your children and your loved ones and you heard them kind of through here. There are three steps to safeguard your home. Monitor all your medications, if you don't need them, get rid of them. Secure your medications, there is another drug take-back at the end of April. However, every police department has a 24/7 drug drop box, people can just go there, drop them off anonymously. Second, it's important to know the signs and symptoms of abuse, medication abuse, so educate yourself. There's a lot of good information out there and we also have it at our office. And also, get help. If you, as they said, you know, if you think you know something, most parents say, "They know their kids," get help for your kids. The third is very important, talk to your family, friends and other parents. Again, if you might know someone's child might be, you know, using or something, talk to them. And finally, share this information with others. So, again, I want to thank you for your time and letting us get this word out.
Now, with that, you could actually contact the pharmacy, if you find drugs, there's a marking on the pill, you could contact the pharmacist and they would be able to tell you what type of medication it is. So, if a kid's telling you, "Oh, it's Tylenol," call the pharmacist, read them the number and they'll be able to tell you exactly what it is.
You could look it up online, too. We could do that. And part of our toolkit... Tell you the color of the markings, all that, what it is. Part of our toolkit has a poster of all the pills and we're trying to even get those into the schools. We were having a conversation with the principal and he opened his desk and pulled out a pill and said, "Oh, you know, we found this." And so, yeah, there's a lot of good ways to get educated on that.
That's a real thing, I mean, we're hearing about it in junior highs, kids having pills, so. Serious problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alain.
I was going to save this for my report, but last Wednesday, I went to Solace Meeting, I wasn't really sure what it was going to be about, but it was at the Amherst Mercy Rec Center. It was a group of people who met to talk about family members who are, have used heroin. They meet twice a month in different areas throughout Lorraine County, so if you know somebody or you need support with this, you can contact Kathy and her phone number is 823-6177 or you could also email her at jkmdmps@hotmail.com. And Solace is associated with the Communities that Care of Lorraine County, this coalition that you talked about today and I was going to bring this up, so I'm glad you did. I didn't know you were going to be here, but it kind of worked out good, so, thank you for what you do and helping in the community.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
New Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Investment?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners' authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summer sheet for employees within jurisdiction, Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cordell?
I do have a few personnel issues, specifically Job and Family Services and Golden Acres, some potential hires I want to talk to the board about. Also, a potential sale and purchase of real estate, update on labor negotiations. I don't expect the meeting to take too long, Commissioner Williams is not feeling well this morning.
I know we spoke about a potential issue, I asked Mr. Innis to look into something. Do we need to, what would that fall under, Jerry? Anything come out of it? Did you get a chance to look at that?
Yeah, I did. That could fall under the eminent domain legal proceeding.
Okay. I'll leave that for Jerry's business if he wants, okay? But all of those topics are allowable for executive session discussion, so I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today, we go into executive session, we talk about those items that have outlined. Thank you.
Apprehenive the reading of the minutes of February 19?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Authorized various payments for indigent veterans in accordance with the Ohio Revest Code 5901.25, $1,000 to Doven Funeral Home Lorraine for indigent veteran Jackie H. Rains Senior Vermillion, and $1,000 to Boyer &amp; Cool Home for funerals Lorraine from James T. Molass Lorraine.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Community Development, enter into lease agreement with Port Authority effective retroactive to December 2013 through April 30, 2014, in the amount now to exceed $3,000 due prepaid from the 3412 building lease account. This lease is for cold storage and clones with the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative grant.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Clerk Courts, extend the lease agreement with South Shore Community Development Corporation Lorraine for Lorraine Title Office currently located at St. Joe's. Current lease expires March 31, 2014 and would extend to June 30, 2014 and cost remains the same based upon $10 per square foot.
So moved.
Second?
Yeah, has there been any conversation with Mr. Mayor McCauskey about the future?
I gave you a letter yesterday.
He sent a letter to us this week? I'm sorry, it is...
Yeah, he did, he looked at the Palisade Civic Center, which is 2,155 square foot. The center building, 300 Broadway, would not work, it only has 720 square foot and he wants to put additional resources at that location.
Alright.
But look in your pile on your desk, you probably got a copy of this somewhere.
Do we want to do a motion to allow him to enter into lease?
Well, they have to give him the due date, so that's why they were doing this.
They're probably going to do that first.
At least how much you guys were doing, so... Whatever you wanna do.
Can we wait till I just read it out next week?
You're trying to do this right away?
Nope, I'm doing it next week.
Okay.
But we're still doing this one?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Engineer War Contract Area Materials, Inc., Sandusky, the amount $102,900 for limestone aggregate for the Highway Department. Three bids were received on February 18th, this being the most responsive complying with specifications. Engineer's estimate was $110,000 and will be paid from the MVGT Supplies Materials Account.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Soil and Water, approve allocation and payment amount of $40,556 to Soil and Water Conservation District for the year 2014.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, and this won't be new for Commissioner Kokoski, 'cause she was in a conversation yesterday in my office. She just happened to be in this...
Wrong place at the wrong time, no?
Well, maybe the right place.
Just kidding. That's the right place.
It was very serendipitous that you were there when I had to make that conference call, but I think you spent about a half an hour, 45 minutes, understanding the challenges that I'm facing with FTA and ODOT and a myriad of other folks trying to keep transit afloat in Lorraine County. I hope the conversation was very enlightening to you and understand the beatings that I've been taking from our friends in the federal government. They are our friends, even though they're very... They were very... A little bit hostile yesterday. The unfortunate part is that while I've been trying to put packages of funding together and projects together, specifically with the transportation center and the final leg of having train service there and the platforms, which everybody or folks out there seem to be talking about, but we're not getting a lot of fiscal support for. I wasn't... I'm not able to convince, and I should not be able to convince because we're not gonna get the project even started in time. ODOT to continue to allow us to hang on to 2011 monies to put towards that project. We simply haven't been able to develop the local match necessary for those grant funds. So I need to send a letter, which I have here, which I will be sending, and I don't need a resolution for, it's an administrative action, relinquishing $2.2 million back to be distributed to those communities that wanna have transit. Now, Commissioner Williams, you were with me when we were up in Vermillion and we met with folks from the western side of Ohio talking about those transits up there. And I think that you were a little surprised when I asked them to thank us for funding their new transportation system up there, and they said what? "Thank you."
Yeah.
Because they got the last amount of money that we released back to the state through their appropriation process to give to those transit systems. So to date, we're gonna be somewhere around $5 million of money that has not been spent here in Lorraine County for lack of a local match on those dollars. This by far is the biggest one-time release of dollars. Recognizing that if you churn $2.2 million in this community, you get $6 to $7 million easily worth of economic incentive. We're paying for transit. You've heard me say it before. But where are we paying for transit, Commissioners?
Other communities.
Everywhere else but here.
Everywhere else but here. And you heard me have that discussion with the FTA and with ODOT down at the state yesterday, that Lorraine County continues to subsidize transit systems in other people's communities because we don't have a local match.
Go a little farther, like, everybody pays into federal taxes. Those federal taxes would normally come back here if we had match money.
We are a donor community with respect to federal dollars for transit and mass transit issues. Those taxes are being paid out of Lorraine County. They go to the federal government. The federal government disperses monies back to community based upon formulas and grants and needs, and we are not getting our federal dollars back to this community to pay for transit.
Because we don't have match money.
Because we don't have match money. And I will tell you, in 2012, I have $2.7 million in jeopardy, and for 2013, $2.5 million. Now, the reason those years are... We're dealing with 11 now, even though we're in 14, is because we're able to roll... We use the last amount of appropriation we got to support our transit. So we're always about two years behind on funding. We keep them open that long, it's allowable. But the 11 money now will be... The state will actually lose it, the appropriation, if we don't return it to the state for redistribution to those other systems. And so it needs to be spent before we complete the state fiscal year. I will tell you that the state has not been bad about this. They have been very patient with us, but we can't ask them to lose that kind of money when there's other systems that can willingly come up with the match money to expend those funds. I don't know what else to say about this. It's a broken record. We've been talking about it. Commissioner Kokoski, I hope you appreciate how well I represented Lorraine County yesterday with the FTA. It was a very, very difficult conversation, and it continues to be difficult conversations with them. Everybody's trying to help us, though. But you heard them. What are we doing to help ourselves?
Right, that's our problem.
And we said we're going again for a levy, asking for a levy again. And they asked, "Well, what's different this time?" And there really isn't anything different. The landscape really hasn't changed. We're actually asking for more money than we did last time. And I do wanna see if Bev wants to come up. We are having a trans... I don't mean to break into your thing, but we're having a transit levy meeting, so anybody that is interested in helping get this levy going, it's going to be on March 4th at 11:00 up here on the fourth floor. So Bev, are you still here? Do you wanna come up and talk about it a little bit? Kinda go...
Well, it's perfect. I have the agenda right here. I was gonna segue right into that.
She's our chairperson. I'm on the committee. You're more than welcome to attend if you like. We need all the great minds in the room together to...
I think that was a compliment.
Morning, Commissioners. My name's Bev Beidelman. I made myself an acting chairperson for the transit tax levy, 'cause I knew we needed to get started. You know, it's one thing for us to come here and complain to you about everything, but it's another thing to really get involved and try to make a difference. So we're having our meeting on Tuesday, March 3rd at 11:00 a.m. in Commissioners' Hearing Room D.
Fourth, 'cause it says fourth.
March 4th. I'm sorry, it is. March 4th at 11:00 a.m. That's Tuesday. And we're inviting people in the community to come out, a lot of grassroots people. We want religious associations, clubs, businesses, and we're trying very hard to get them to be a part of this, 'cause we don't wanna keep losing money for Lorraine County, giving it to other counties so that they can benefit. So I think it's time we look out for ourselves, just like you would do for your family. You know, family comes first. Lorraine County should come first for us, too.
That's right.
That's it. Any questions?
Thanks, Bev. We appreciate your support.
We really do, Bev. Thank you for stepping up to the plate. Let's see if we can be successful this May.
We... We heard about the teen drug problem this morning, and it's a powerful and moving video that was played. But there's also other pockets of problems in Lorraine County. One of those is even when we do help people release from their addictions or they come back from being jailed and/or they have problems finding work, we don't have a way to get them there. We don't have a way... When people are trying to help themselves and need a hand up, we don't give them a hand up. They need to be able to get to jobs. If people are going to move themselves forward in life, they do need certain assistances. I do hear from businesses that... And I will say, it's mostly with entry-level work and jobs that there's a problem moving workers consistently to those jobs back and forth. There is a problem with people being reintroduced that have had problems in the legal system, being able to maintain employment and get places, so the recidivism rate is high. I could go on and on and on about why a community the size of Lorraine County, the ninth largest county in the state of Ohio, with some of the largest cities in the teens, in the state of Ohio, needs to have a mass transit system that provides some assistance to those that don't have the ability to get around and help themselves. And I'm gonna continue to talk about this because I believe it's necessary. And all the criticism we take, all the blogs that people write about, all the nasty things they say, I don't care. This is a community-wide problem. And I do understand that the southern part of the county does not support transit because they don't see anything that they're gonna get from it. Well, the last time I looked, the four corners of this county included them, and that's called a community. And they're part of that community. And there's things that go on down the southern quadrant of this county that they receive through federal taxes and assistance for various rural things that they... They get farmer's assistance and things like that. We need to support transit. We need to support it as a community. And people need to step forward and make that known. And we need the support of the newspapers. We need the support of the community leaders. And we're not asking for their money, but we'd like to have some money for a campaign, and I'm sure this group's gonna need some financing. But also letters to the editor and speaking in those groups where they meet, because this is not a poor issue, it's not a minority issue, it's not a rich issue, it's a community issue. And it's a community problem, and it requires a community solution. And quite frankly, I'm a little bit embarrassed that we can't come up with a few hundred thousand dollars to save millions for this community.
Agreed. It's always been a shortcoming since the recession, and those who need the most seem to get shortchanged at the end because we can't provide it.
And the other issue, Commissioner Kelo, is when you're down with CCAO, 'cause I know you've been doing a lot of work with them over the years.
Times right.
Make sure that they keep pressing the state to do a better job on supporting transit in these communities. Now, the state has a huge surplus. If you look at the reduction in monies going back to the counties, cities, villages, townships, and you look at the surplus, interestingly, that number is very comparable. It's a linear equation. Reneging on our promises to the local communities and putting in the bank as a surplus.
That's how it's been going down there. We've been fighting it week in, week out.
So if they're gonna rob us over here, at least give us a little bit more over here to support mass transit, because we're in the lower quadrant as states go in how the state supports public transportation. And I don't care if it's a Republican governor, a Democrat governor, or a Republican legislator or Democrat legislator in majority. They've all done a poor job.
Right. They've always done a poor job of funding public transit, and it's a shame. When you look at the states around us and what they give to their public transits...
So we need to press that issue down at the state level also. And this has nothing to do with the administrators at ODOT. They've been very good with what they have to work with us, so I don't wanna leave any disparaging remarks about our partners that have tried to help us. With the tools that are given to them by the people in charge, they have done a fine job.
We just haven't helped ourselves.
We received an email, somebody complaining about why we're making it a levy versus a sales tax. Can you just explain that we have a minimum sales tax that we can ask for a quarter, correct? Which would bring in about $7, $8 million, which is more than, actually, too much.
It would be...
It wouldn't be never too much, but I mean comparatively what we use to fund the regular general fund compared to $7 million for the transit.
The last thing we wanna do is ask for something that's too big. And a few years ago, back in the late 1999 into 2000, 2001, the general fund was subsidizing transit with what I wanna say, a huge amount of money at the time. And they had a lot of routes on, and I don't think there was a lot of thoughts to productivity of that routing. I'm gonna leave it to say that most people had a view of transit as not being necessary because they were running buses that just weren't... They weren't being utilized. I'm talking about running very efficient routes. I'm talking about running dial-a-ride for people that have no way of getting to doctor's appointments. Right now, all of that burden is going over to... A lot of it's going over to Job and Family Services. And I'm going to be working with them to see if we can promote our dial-a-ride service a little bit more fully. We use private transportation for a lot of those folks right now, and that's a heck of lot more costly than sharing a pool of resources and getting them from point A to point B. We need to come together and find how to deal with these problems as, again, as a group, as a community. But some folks are gonna have to invest in different thinking than they currently do right now. We don't need something that's too big so the taxpayers don't feel too burdened. We asked for $250,000 the last time roughly. We were not even close to being accepted by the taxpayers. Now, you may say, "Why should we ask you more? That's pretty damn stupid." Well, truth is, $250,000 wasn't gonna get us very far, and the $400,000 or so that we're asking for now won't get us much further. But you can see, because we're turning back so much money, we need a little bit more right now. And that's for five years. So it's not gonna solve the problem, but it's gonna allow us to put some more rolling stock on. The other question I get from folks all the time was, "Well, if I support this, is there gonna be a route here? Is there gonna be a route there?" I really can't tell you where the routes are gonna be right now. They're gonna be driven by demand, and we can look at that. But it cost us roughly $55 an hour to roll a bus. So you can figure out from the dollars how many buses we can roll and how many hours we can put them on the street. The issue is educating the taxpayers to the benefits of transit to the working poor, those that don't have jobs, that don't have transportation, the elderly, the people that are challenged, all of those folks. And I don't think it's too much for a community to give a hand up, remembering that 49,000 people, thereabouts in this community, are now receiving benefits through Job and Family Services. We have 300,000 roughly, a little bit more than 300,000 residents here, 49,000. So transit needs to be an integral part of helping those people to get themselves out of that situation where they need that assistance. I don't mean to beat a dead horse here. I've been talking about it off and on now for two years. I hope the taxpayers understand that it's not a big ask. It's a little assistance to their neighbor, a person down the block, or to somebody that doesn't have the ability to help themselves right now. Remember that number, another $2.2 million that won't be spent in this community.
Is that the end of your report?
That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Ernest?
Commissioners, I would request an executive session. I have three or four updates, rather short updates regarding pending litigation matters.
Commissioner's report.
I do have a press release. I'm not sure if it has gone out yet. The Board of Commissioners in Solid Waste District are pleased to announce a food drive partnership with Second Harvest Food Bank and the Lorraine County Dog Kennel. The district is going to have the cab, which we're going to show you here shortly, on-site at designated events throughout the year to receive donated food items. The donated items will be delivered to participating organizations. The district will help promote the food drives during special events at its collection center and various events throughout the county. Keith Bailey said this is something new and exciting for the district. It's a great way to make use of the cab. It gets into the communities and gives residents a chance to donate to organizations here in Lorraine County. Keith, do you want to put up on the screen our cab?
Yeah, can we put cab up for us, Ernie?
Trailer and talk about this program a little further?
Yeah. Cab stands for clean and beautiful, all right? It's an innovative idea. We had to loan a trailer out to communities, groups who want to use the trailer to do community projects. We had the trailer out 20-some weeks last year, weekends, in the summertime. Now we have demand for more trailers than we've got, so we're equipping some older trailers we had in the fleet to be cab trailers as well. We'll have four cab units available when spring rolls around and have the tools and equipment inside them for people to borrow them. But we wanted to take cab one step further, get cab out into the community, make it more visible, so we struck a partnership with the Second Harvest Food Bank. The first actual collection of food will be on April 19th, in combination with our shred day at the collection center. We have some concerns. We have the six most important items that we'll be asking for in our news releases, and we're working with the Second Harvest Food Bank to get those items in the trailer. Also, we're rolling the trailer out as a partnership with the Lorraine County Dog Kennel to get dog food for the kennel. We're going to do this at fair. We're going to put the trailer in the fair tent, where we collect dog food during the fair and other avenues as we work with our dog warden to make that happen. So this is what we're going to be doing with cab this year, besides going out and working in communities and doing beautification projects.
That's great.
All right?
Thank you.
Did we get any money from Ford for putting the Crown Vic on there? This is a great program. It actually brings a lot of publicity to the Solid Waste District and gets the word out on that. It's going to be a lot of fun.
Switch us back over then. Okay, lastly, last Friday, Lisa Hovar, our budget director and myself, attended Emergency Management. It was all day. We had two live presentations and two web-based presentations regarding a reverse 911 system. Yesterday, we actually had the fifth person who we couldn't hear from on Friday to talk to us about their program. So a lot of really good information, very exciting. We're going to have a meeting next week, I believe, to kind of pinpoint, narrow it down to like one or two and decide from there. So we'll be able to contact people in case of an emergency, weather emergency, boil alerts. The actual, the one that we're looking at is unlimited administrative users, so we can let school systems, you know, for calling off schools, all kinds of different things. It's like, it's crazy technology, so I'm really excited about it.
Do we have Homeland Grant money available for that? I mean, we're doing it through the Homeland Grant Committee, you know, that's reviewing this.
They don't. It may be a combination, but maybe 911 funds. I'm not sure if 911 funds could be used for that, or...
Can I jump in a little bit?
Sure.
I've actually got a conference call on Friday with the Commissioners Association that's talking about reverse 911, so I was actually going to invite you, send you the contact. It's at 10:00 a.m. Friday morning in regards to reverse 911 and implementation and financing.
Well, they want to do, we'll see, the reverse 911's a little bit different than the alert systems they're looking at right now. You're looking at things like Code Red and so forth.
Yes. Yeah. Because right now, we do pay a certain amount for notifying internally.
Right, we do it through EMA.
Which this would cover, take over that. That'd be a redundant...
Yeah, the administrative privileges would be by community, so that's a Sheffield Village could notify the Sheffield Village residents if there was, you know, a boil alert or...
It could go by street. It could go by city. It could go by, you could just draw an area on a map. You can exclude one house, say there's a hostage situation, and you don't want it to go to that house. You can omit that. I mean, it's just like, it's amazing the technology that's available to us that we need to tap into.
The costs are also amazing.
Actually, it's not as bad as you might think.
All right.
And we're looking at all-inclusive. Some of them charge for training, some of them charge per administrator. Some of them are unlimited, except for actual phone calls. Text messages are free, you know, emails, all those, but actual telephone calls are, could be limited, but we're looking at unlimited for that as well. It's very exciting.
Well, I got to give Tom Kelly credit for pulling this together. You know, I don't know if you know the background of this, but there's been quite a bit of acrimonious behavior going on with some of the political subdivisions about whether we should be doing this, not doing it, what system's going to be picked, what's not going to be picked. And some of the communities have a minor system in place, like Oldland has something in place, so it...
There's quite a few that have going off on their own to getting this done, and I think it should be a collective county thing.
You're right. We found that by unifying ourselves, we got the economy of scale when we purchased things. We just did that with the 911 software package. But Tom's been holding a loose group of folks together through the EMA Homeland Security Grant Committee, and hopefully those spokespeople are going out and talking to these other communities and getting some strong responses for them.
Well, we had a variety of people in attendance. We had police fire. We had hospital personnel. We had police, sheriff, a little bit of everybody was there to be represented. People that have it, people that don't have it, people that want it. So it was good. Excited. I'll let you know after we have our next meeting. I think that's the end of my report.
Can I do it?
I hope so.
Actually, I was in Columbus, like I said, this week with Commissioners Association this past Friday, and we had the new director of the organization, mental health, drug abuse. I forgot the name of the new organization. They've umbrellaed everything together. Tracy?
Adams.
Adams? Is that the new organization? Okay.
OMASS.
OMASS.
They've got a new, whatever the new...
Acronym?
Yeah. And I hate acronyms.
Me, too.
She did a nice job presenting all the new issues they want to deal with, including the Start Talking was a big part of her discussion, and they'll be rolling that out, and I believe it's in the governor's state of the state. He brought the Start Talking issue, so. Getting down there, fighting, arguing about the local government funds and helping us out up here with the new mid-biennial review, the review of the state budget. We'll see what happens. A lot of discussion how they were going to handle the fracking tax money. A lot of work down there in Columbus, I guess, amongst the legislators. Also, I had an opportunity to judge the Youth of the Year Award at the Boys and Girls Club last Wednesday. Great presentation. We had four young students, all with unbelievable stories of where they started at and where they end up at. The local press covered it quite well. It took us, the three judges, a while to figure out who should represent Lorraine County in the regional competition in Detroit, but congratulations to Shaquille Hedrich from Lorraine High School. Just an amazing story. Did a great job. So good luck on your way to Detroit. The clerk's working on a proclamation that we can send to the young man, certificate of achievement. And then Commissioner Williams, I both attended the Punske Ball. Congratulations to the Kudrowskis on another wonderful event once again. Great turnout, sold out as always. A little bit more conservative than yours in the past, but it was a very nice event. End of my report.
Great event. Actually, I had a lot of events I had to go to, but I'm under the weather, so end of my report.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioners, we're going to send Linda Keys a retirement proclamation for the 30 years in the owner's office, for correspondence.
Will the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone looking to address the board this morning? Well, then I will make a motion to executive session as outlined by the county administrator and county prosecutor.
Second.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor downtown Aleria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.